Good evening, I'd like to call the October 21st School Committee Meeting to order. And first on the agenda is celebrating student learning at Jenkins Elementary.
We'd like to welcome Ms. Rebecca Long, our principal, our students and staff. We'll show you this in just a moment, and I'm going to give the committee an overview of their recent literacy night.
Good evening, I'm Rebecca Long, Principal of the Jenkins School. And we have some of our staff and students here to talk a little bit about our recent STEM literacy night we had just a few weeks ago. So I'm going to call up Lydia Saint-Ange, Heather McInerney, our reading specialist, and Dorian Malvesti is one of our fifth grade teachers. And we also have some students to present to, we'll get to that part. Hi, I'm Heather McInerney, and so we wanted to come and share because we had a really positive, great experience that started off the school year. Our literacy night, uh, literacy steam night was October 3rd, and the theme of it was blasting off into a new school year, which was also the theme of, uh, the summer reading theme of all public libraries across the nation. It was, the, really our purpose was to sort of build community and invite parents and students into our school and provide a bunch of learning activities, hands-on learning activities, so they can have a shared experience. And it took a lot of people to coordinate and to help behind the scenes and day of within our school and within, across schools and even in our community. So Lydia is going to tell you about some of the activities that we had.
Thank you.
I'm Lydia Saint-Ange, other literacy specialist at Jenkins. So we had a multitude of offerings on the 3rd, and we were very excited to be able to offer dinner to our families because, as we all know, going out in the evening with your kids can be a challenge. So the PTO very generously supported pizza for the evening, and cafeteria staff was able to come in and, and help feed our families at Jenkins. We also had Rick English deliver the Star Lab, and Brendan Smith from Cushing. And I set up the Star Lab, and he ran this awesome planetarium that was just chock-a-block full all night. Liz Dorian, who's not here tonight, did a ton of planning for STEM activities, which Dorian's going to explain in a minute. Tracy Duffy, our art teacher, together with her parents, Kate Duffy, who's a fifth grade teacher, and her father, who is not a teacher, but a very helpful volunteer, ran the art room, which was outer space creations, which would not have been possible without donations of materials from staff and from families and kids were just super creative, creating robots and aliens and spaceships and planets and entire worlds in there. We also had a journal-making station, literacy games, reading under the stars where kids could read in tents with stars projected on the ceiling. We had two therapy dogs, Heather's mother brought her dog, and Rebecca brought her dog, Maggie, who is also a very big helper at our school now that she's kind of met all the kids. She is a nice comfort creature to have around. We also were really appreciative that teachers let us use their classrooms and them as we were running all these stations. And Buttonwood very generously donated a prize basket, which one of the little kiddos won. And it was just, it was truly a community experience. And Dorian's going to explain, our gym was set up as a, kind of a STEM workshop from space. It was awesome.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dorian Malvesti, I'm one of the fifth grade math and science teachers over at Jenkins. I was fortunate enough to be in the gym with Ms. Dorian, and she had set up a huge amount of activities for the kids, and they all related to space. We had so many parents and students and family members engaged in all kinds of activities related to space, one of which was students could create a paper rocket and use a straw to launch it. They had a moonwalk, they had an activity where they could measure the height of their bounce, it was an anti-gravity center. They had partners working together to safely land space shuttles on a runway. They had all kinds of wonderful activities for the students, and they really, really enjoyed it. One of the activities was also an interactive Merge Cube Center, which these fine young children are going to tell you a little bit more about in a moment. But it was a wonderful night, people had a great time, there were so many people in and out, everybody just had a blast. It was a great night. Thank you so much.
The team has put together a brief slideshow, it's just a minute or two, a couple of minutes
So we're going to introduce one of the activities, this is Olivia, Coco, and Max.
Hi, my name is Coco, and these are the Merge Cubes, they're a virtual version of not just this, um, our world, but the whole solar system.
Hi, my name is Max Kevir, and these show you the solar system, and you can, and you could look at all this, all the stars and planets, and it's just really, really cool.
My name is Olivia, and we're going to show you how they work, and we'll bring them around to you.
Pluto, which one? Show me Pluto.
So then you can touch the sun, and it will give you information.
That sounds like a lot of fun.
Hit the info button. It tells you all about it. And if you rotate the cube, it rotates the...
That's super cool.
Nice.
Thank you very much. This was a great experience, and as you see, it took a collaborative effort of many people that are invested, and it was just an all-around awesome night to involve the community and our families as well as our staff. So thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, I think that looks like a lot of fun, a lot of learning, and that they might not know they're, they're learning, which is the best way. And those, uh, uh, the Merge Cubes, those are really cool. Thank you so much, and thank you for providing all those activities for the kids.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll just say, yeah, thank you to our parents as well for bringing our kids out to be able to share this with our school committee. And one of the things that I love that we do at our committee meetings is just take a few minutes at the beginning to remind us of why we do all of this important work. So thank you for taking a few minutes before or after dinner to come out and share your students and their experience with us, we appreciate it.
Thank you again. Next up is a student representative report.
Sure. Okay, so one of the things we wanted to talk about this week was the high school math team beginning their season recently. So on October 15th, there were four students from Situate High School that were able to attend a math meet at Worcester Polytech Institute. And this is an annual meet for the team, and judging from the problems they were solving in calculus class, very rigorous, and would be very impressive to watch. So there are generally four students that are selected to attend this meet, and this year it was Shannon Logan, Aiden Burns, Jojo Domato, and Annie Larkin, all seniors. And the high score from each town actually receives a scholarship to WPI. So I believe their results are still coming out for that, but that would be very exciting news to hear for one of them. And last year Situate was in the top 10% of all the schools that attended, actually. So we're hoping, this is a very strong group of students, so we're hoping for another high score this year. And the normal meets for the whole entire team to attend should begin in November, this was kind of a special meet to start it off, and we wish them the best of luck as they continue their season. PSAT testing also happened this past weekend on Saturday, October 19th. Both sophomores and juniors were attending this, and it's just a great way to prepare for the SATs that the juniors will be taking this year. And they can also qualify for national merit scholarships, which is another great opportunity. And also additional clubs have begun at the high school, including the A and E Club and Happy, which stands for Helping and Preparing Positive Youth. So just trying to encourage positive lifestyle changes throughout the student body at SHS. Alrighty, so another news, there was a New England Conservatory field trip with the Wind Ensemble last week. So on October 10th, high school students in the Wind Ensemble took a field trip to the New England Conservatory to watch the 50th Anniversary Concert of the Creation of the Wind Ensemble, which is super cool. I didn't get to go, you know, need work. So students said that Jordan Hall was the perfect atmosphere for the field trip, and that the music was absolutely unforgettable and very well played. We have our first concert tomorrow as well, so this week on Tuesday, October 22nd, at 7:00 PM, the Schools Reading Department will hold their first concert in the auditorium. The choir, freshman choir, and symphonic band will be playing, and I hope you guys can all come. Thank you very much. Next up is acceptance of the minutes for October 7th. Is there any questions on the minutes? Dorian, your motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 6th, 7th School Committee Meeting. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Right, next up is a leadership report.
Just a couple of brief updates for this month's leadership report. October 2nd was National Walk to School Day, some pictures there of students getting out, we had good weather just before that storm hit, so we were able to have Walk to School Day. There you see Jay the Jenkins Shark with our Jenkins students doing their Walk to School. Our science classes are in full swing, and so our students taking a look at biodiversity around this region, taking a look at some of the biodiversity here in the oceans and the shores of Situate. One highlight we're really excited about, we had the Commissioner of Education, Mr. Jeffrey Riley, was able to come and visit Situate Public Schools. This has been a meeting, a visit that we've been planning for about a year now. The Commissioner, a few months ago, set his vision forward for the Commonwealth, they call it the Way Forward. It's just a few pages, and it outlines his priorities, similar to what we have for our strategic plan. One of his priorities is deeper learning and authentic learning, and that's lockstep with the work that we're doing across Situate. So I was chatting with him at another conference, and was telling him a little bit about the work that we're doing in elementary and middle and high, and our focus on authentic learning, our focus on, you know, project-based learning and performance-based assessments. He was jazzed about it, and we invited him to come down and visit. He did a cool tour here at the, the middle school, got to meet our students, got to meet our staff, talked a little bit about his vision, but also just heard a lot of their experiences with our school and with, with project-based learning in general. I just want to take a quote from his, his conversation with us because I think it's apropos, it's halfway in the middle there. He said, you know, "We've been doing so-called education reform for 25 years with exams, with standards, and all of that is important." Quote him though, "I think it's time to close the chapter on that and get back to what's really important, and it's quality instruction." And he'd said, "You here in Situate with project-based learning are exactly what we're looking at." So we took that as a very high compliment from the Commissioner of Education affirmation for the work that all of our staff and all of our kiddos are doing. Certainly more work to do, there's no question about it, but feel affirmed we're going in the right direction, given the state's direction as well. One other highlight for you, we were also able to host the Inspector General and the Massachusetts School Building Authority for a story of a school. The Commissioner's visit was focused on, you know, teaching and learning across our entire district, about authentic education in general. Story of a school, story of a building is focused on just one entity, one building, in this case, the Gates Middle School. And what the MSBA and the IG's office does is they invite other school districts who are thinking about doing a building project, and they bring them to a building authority and build, like ours here. And they have a number of workshops that are put on by the MSBA, by the IG's office, as well as by our staff. You know, our teachers, our students, our administrators, talk a little bit about the experience of teaching and learning here, as well as the project itself, envisioning six, seven years ago, all the way through to construction, follow-through, and, you know, what happens today and what happens over the past few weeks. So really cool opportunity to share a little bit about teaching and learning in general and about this building with, with folks around the state. No major updates from DESI and the legislature yet, we will keep an eye on the education bill that continues to go through Beacon Hill, but nothing, nothing of note at this time. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a phone question, just because it goes to something we did last year. So last week, California passed a law that I think by 2022, middle schools have to start by 8:00 AM and high schools have to start by 8:30. Has our state looked at anything like that at all, or is it on the horizon at all? Are we kind of ahead of the curve on that one?
It's, uh, so I think Situate is ahead of the curve on that one. It was one of the bills that went through early in the session, but ultimately didn't get final traction. It's something that's been in conversations, I think, at the beginning of the past two years that I've seen, we get like the list of proposals that are pretty long, and not all of them make it through committee. But I haven't seen anything recently that says, that, that has some significant traction that could potentially become a law.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question. When the Commissioner was here, did he, I'm assuming he didn't get deep into measuring student learning in terms of the performance-based assessment piece? But are they really going to turn that corner? And how does that, do you have any idea how that look?
We talked a little bit about that, right? We had some honest conversation about MCAS, right? That's like the elephant in that room, I think, when you talk about what assessment is. And, you know, I think his philosophy is similar to Situate's philosophy. MCAS is important, but it is only one measure, and it's a very standard measure. And if we want to talk about authentic education, we should also talk about authentic assessment. And his words, not ours, was that, "It's not that you have to change, the test is going to start changing to be more authentic in the way that it tests for student knowledge. You should still check for understanding, you have to do that, that's fundamental. And you should have an assessment that's across the entire Commonwealth, so you can compare apples to apples." But if you want authentic, you want authentic instruction to occur, then your assessment can't just be a standardized assessment, it's got to be an authentic assessment of their understanding of what they can do, not just what they can remember. And so for me, that was really encouraging, and I think affirming to, again, the work we're doing K-12, you know? But no change yet in MCAS as we see it, other than we're in the next-gen MCAS, right? Second year of next-generation MCAS, which is intentional to be more focused on skills, but is still a standard test, right? You still do it on your computer, and you bubble in some responses, and you choose multiple choice, and you type in your, your answers, and you don't demonstrate the understanding in as authentic a way as we'd hope so. Yeah. I think it's encouraging, but I think it's going to be slow to change.
Thanks. Thank you. I was lucky enough to attend both the Commissioner's visit and the story of the building, and he was very down-to-earth and recognized there were two ways of learning, but right now we're only of one way of testing that, which is a problem. Okay, next up on the agenda is the presentation of high school exams, Principal Wargo.
Here's Mr. Wargo, and I think if you pass this to you... You've got one? Oh, great. There we go. Let me pull this up for you, Mr. Wargo, give me just a moment. Oh yes, Mr. Wargo.
Great, thank you, should present Griffin Ford. Good? And if we're allowing you to talk to the school committee, and before the presentation starts, we're going to jump to the third slide to alleviate any fears or concerns that may exist about what this is not. This is not an attempt, or this is an attempt to present midterm final exam. The midterm final exam will continue, but I guess we're going to start using different language with your assessments. It's going to talk about what type of assessment are most valuable, and certain ideas of authentic components for students to demonstrate learning and what they want. We're going to jump back to the first slide, but before we start, I want to take that mindset that I'm here to look into the midterm final exam. So what am I here to talk about? Here to talk about the grade, starting how cabinet of students' final grade. If you look at our slide, we'll show you how the grade is determined mathematically. Currently, the grade is determined according to each quarter.
Bless you.
It's determined by each quarter, ten percent, so if you add your mid-term and final, it's equivalent to a quarter of the grade. Students in school for 180 days, approximately forty of those are each quarter. And they ask us to, for 90 minutes, to demonstrate about learning, and that becomes 10% of their grade. I found this to be disproportionate, we've had discussions over the years about this with staff, with students, with school council, with teachers, with administration. So quickly to show you what this looks like in reality for a second. There's your quarterly grades, there's your midterm final grades, and that's how your final grade is calculated. We're going to pass around to school committees view. Just a breakdown for the sixth period classes, where we took the students' grade for first and second quarter, and then looked at their midterm and final grades. And if it's in red, it indicates that midterm or final assessment grade is much lower than their quarterly average. I'm not here to put this idea forward so that a student's grade will go up. What I want to perform is a meaningful rationale about the assessments, and what determines a student's grade or final. So if you look at that 8.7, it's dramatically impacted by that mid-year and final exam. Now, that's not for every student, our students have a beam on part with their quarterly grades, our students have to go up for their midterm and their final assessments. So the approach here is to have an authentic assessment, an approach towards determining students' final grade. So if you go to what we're looking to do now, it's just to take each quarter and assign 25% of students' final grade. A midterm and a final exam period still exists, and a teacher, we're going to get to this in a second, a teacher is so determined to give a substantive, comprehensive sit-down thing if they so desire. Just now, that midterm and final grade will now be folded into the student's quarter. So instead of a standard 10% column, an assessment given at the end of the first semester can go into quarter two, where the teacher is so determined to go to quarter three. During end-of-year assessment, it'll be folded into quarter four, um, one. So again, just the rationale is to be more reasonable about the assessments, and for them to have an equal shot at how they can demonstrate what they know. So why is this taking place? Why is this taking place now? How is this process unfolding? As I said earlier, this is a different discussion in the past three years. When I first got to Situate, this is the very beginning of the mission, and had conversations with the staff about what we're doing, and how the assessments and the time that we're using can sometimes influence the assessment process. And if you look at midterms in particular, from Thanksgiving break to winter break to midterm assessments to February break, it looks as follows. After Thanksgiving, students are in school for 15 days, and they are off for winter break. They're in school for 12 days, and then we do midterm assessments. Then they're in school for 15 days, and they have February vacation. There's no continuity whatsoever as to this party, there's no continuity in the teaching and learning that teach. Also, there's no opportunity, if this is a semester class, the teachers to give valuable feedback to the students. I was able to talk a little more quickly, because he mentioned Welzy. What Welzy does during his time here is assessments can take place anytime, it just as work that unfolds in a second. And the teachers, Welzy and assignments, provide critical feedback to the students during that mid-year and final time period. So the students can understand what they did or did not do well. When the teachers are up to a problem, they close the door on the book, or sometimes they never get to see a student again after they've assessed their grade points. Again, we talked about with this quarter, we're waiting for sign to the end of the year, and then finals will be 10% or second. This is for a time that super-ten just talked about, how the assessments, the landscape has changed. And if the only way to assess them is through a standardized traditional exam, it must tomorrow. Part of the concerns with something like that is, well, you're not preparing the student for life, that applies to particular policies. And I counter that with, if we did what we traditionally have done, wide midterm and final assessment, plus MCAS, plus AP exams, plus SAT, plus PSAT, our students will have almost 75 standardized sit-down, grab a pencil, fill in a circle. That's plenty of opportunities for people to practice that type of setting for preparation for policies. For that to be in helping our educators to determine what to use that 90% of the time for, if it puts a certain tendency. So the structure stays the same, so we're not concerned about, are we learning the structures? We are not learning the structure, it's the same as always has. But now that time and period time is determined by the educator, how to best use it. It could be a sit-down, some comprehensive exam, it could be an inquiry-based lab, it could be some type of authentic opportunity for the students to demonstrate their ability. And that's the beauty of this, is the intent, and it's sometimes unintended, it's always happening in discussions, is to allow the educator to best determine how to use that time. No longer does it have to be a traditional thing. Teachers can do what they want with that 90% of the period time, which is really freeing, it's really empowering for our educators. And for our students, we hope that part of this is alleviating some level of stress. And understand stress is a more part of life, knowing to adjust to, prepare for, open stress for that. But let's be developing, hoping, among stress, and being out of our students' lives. That may be some of the lesson that we've learned, right, what assessments used to look like. Assessments don't look like that all the time, and during the final picture, it's changed, the landscape has changed. We need to be proactive and understand that landscape having changed, and address the needs down before it's too late. So I come before you to present all the recalculations of our students' final grades and how they're extrapolating. Again, it does not, although they intern on those things. It changes the focus. It can happen a week before midterms, it can happen a week after, it can happen a week before finals. The teachers will still meet with students during that 90% of the period time. Students will be required to come to school, closing that 90% of the period time. Construction needs to go on. That assessment, what's developing, the learning of lessons is more important, to keep that contact among our students, particularly there that really chunk the time during midterms. So that's what I presented to you for review. I'm here to answer any questions you were coming out about.
Thank you, Mr. Wargo. I do have a question about the, how the midterms, what category, category are they in, in the, for each semester?
for each semester? Because I know teachers break, get up their grade between like homework, classwork, tests, quizzes, and such.
That's a great question. So if a teacher wants to give an assessment during midterm and final finals, it'll be weighted to be included in that quarter.
Okay, like under tests, or?
Like any other test.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for clarifying the new, the new procedure.
Thank you for the opportunity to share your view, and I'll have today a little bit more to families to explain it as well.
Yeah, is this, when will this be implemented?
September one, this year. It's been rolled out.
It's been rolled out, okay.
So Principal Worgo, I think you hit this dead on, I mean, having two tests in two days out of one hundred and eighty impacting twenty percent of a kid's grade. I agree that that needs to change, and I think this is a great approach to start with. I just have two questions. So for the first and third quarters, generally, would a student get the same amount of homework and tests as like the second and fourth quarter? So really, it's just the same amount of work plus a midterm and final rolled in?
It's a great question, and I came to answer it, and I hope is that we continue the discussion with educators, that assessments are having to roll up here, beyond other form of assessments on my portfolio, and some of assessments, so if the teacher that would continue to get some of mid-year type of assessment, make sure that quarter two more, also, we are what look like a quarter one, that's especially, because the teacher at the department level, so it's now, now, now seeing so many quarter one, quarter two, that ninety-two drops down to eighty-six. So you wonder, should there be some type of opportunity where that it should look something like this, where the act of school year, or what it may be something like this?
So I guess that answered my second question. Have you considered doing, instead of a mid-year and a final, four tasks, one for each quarter, as opposed to just impacting this quarter two and quarter four grades?
We haven't, but most of the times, we have, we need to roll up, like, you know, on the benchmark, you've got eight to ten weeks, and that's where you're supposed to do your test currently, and imagine what traditional looks like in midterm, and first, and final, and you start kind of laying into more of a common benchmark.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I'm going to open, yeah, I imagine that some people have some questions from Mr. Worgo. So just state your name and address.
Jackie, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
So will this be communicated to the students at the beginning, however the teacher decides to, um, to use the assessment? Are they going to know from the very beginning of the quarter so they can prepare?
So I guess we're talking backward design for students to know how they're going to do a grade in this class?
And how to prepare for whatever the assessment can look like?
Sure.
So from the beginning, because I didn't, I don't know, has this been announced to parents?
It has not. No, this is the first time.
Okay. But the students know?
I would say that very degrees, some difference of them.
Okay. So moving forward?
Sure. For fairness, I'll inform your student ahead of time so they can plan accordingly, and how to, proportion, proportion their time to prepare for whatever they have semester one, and maybe your assessment may not look like. Those decisions will be taken place for students by their.
At the beginning of the quarter?
Well, and this is the cats are at a barn.
But we can.
You know, teachers have not, most of our teachers have not engaged in this conversation since we're late to the game on this whole lot, you know, this was decided that people in their class were here, we are, I will take call, call for this, just now, it is up to the call. So our teachers are, they have to hold on to this information, not chase, just in case, it's not going to fall. So we will then have, have those discussions at the department, but I'm sure there's some consistency amongst departments.
And then moving forward, the communication will be at the beginning of the quarter to sort of prepare them each time, depending on if it's like, you said, a lab, or a test, or a?
Sure, and I guess I'm going to get for a question, do you have any theories or diagrams, you have a borderline?
Yeah.
Once it began?
Yes.
What do I, what do you expect me to do?
Yep.
For tailoring this, maybe it's not a traditional sit-down exam. How am I supposed to prepare for inquiry-based lab? How do I prepare for demonstration of learning? How do I prepare for debate? How do I prepare for surprise seminar? So all those things logically will, you know, take what's in passing, and then. I'm not sure if that would answer your question.
I'm just wondering when the students will know, so they'll be, they'll be told at the beginning of, beginning of the quarter, moving forward, obviously, what to expect for that kind of assessment? So they'll have all quarter to sort of focus on, this is what's going to be coming at the end, instead of a sit-down test? You know what I'm saying? Is that going to be?
And I hope it happens more logically, I hope there's more, you can say that conversation that is, forty days from now, you're not having to do tests, I'm hoping during these tests, forty days, they're doing these things. Maybe, maybe or may not have some sort of talking assessment task.
Okay.
I want to try to answer that question.
Any other questions for Mr. Worgo?
I have a question. Sorry. This is not necessarily specific to Mr. Worgo, but just thinking of that approach at the high school, will it trickle into the middle school, or what kind of, at all? Just that structure?
I think, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to talk about that?
Like elementary's still pretty test heavy.
So Ms. Pran Delaney, the middle school does not have a finals and midterm structure?
Yeah.
And the elementary doesn't, but it's just that, you know, anyway, it's, it's just what are they doing over the course of a unit of study, or over a quarter? You know, how do we assess the students? And it's all part of the plan from the beginning.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. I would like to point out, too, that, I mean, there are some classes that traditionally don't have midterms if, or finals, so it's really not that much of a change, it's just where they're proportioning their grade, really.
I agree, and I think we're trying to understand that what's good for one department is what's good for the other department. Assessment given one department may not be satisfactory, and another department. So you find the last, for educators, in the department, makes them sorry, determination, that's the best way, it wasn't the best time, was to assess it. Right now, again, it's very, very traditional, that we stop halfway through school, and we prepare for that halfway through school, and so we lose days of instruction, and do the same thing at the end. Again, I'm not saying we're remaining in term and final, I think we're just approaching everything.
Thank you.
So I'm not that familiar with, with the current mid-year structure, so is it, is it a first school day that currently has exams in it for ninety, ninety minutes?
So there's, there's two blocks that we each day, each one being ninety minutes, it's only two each.
Yep.
The students just have an opportunity to exhale, and they're ready for the next one. So as I pointed out, sometimes a student may come in for one, they may come in for two, they may come in for none of those blocks. They have a study, you know, they exempted, the teacher may decide if they have to do demonstration of knowledge, and then before, let the film in particular, or do presentations, the students will all come into meeting that day, so you want to make sure there's some level of consistency, and we'd love to have the students in the building as much as possible connected and ready.
So I know you said this, but, so this structure, this structure will not change, it's just what's being done during that time period that will change.
Correct. So again, if I'm a teacher, and this is day eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, or ninety, I may not do an inquiry-based lab, I mean, ninety minutes to do a full-length file lab, I have not had the opportunity before. I may have given an assessment the week before, and use this time for feedback. I may not be given an assessment till third quarter, and I might just want a lesson. So really, just empowering teachers to do something useful, productive, and efficient, and effective, what the students want to do.
Okay. And I'm assuming since this structure was approved, it doesn't impact timeline learning restrictions?
It does not.
Okay. This is actually adding to timeline learning, I would think.
Counted the same a little bit. I would just add one other thing, and that's, we've been thinking about project-based learning in this school district for seven years, maybe eight years now, and so the students that are in Mr. Worgo's high school have been living and breathing that for a long time, and this is just one more step to providing kids opportunities to show what they can do, to show their understanding, to demonstrate that understanding. As Mr. Worgo said, if a standardized test is appropriate, it's still appropriate, but if there's, needs to be an opportunity to do something more complex, more authentic, to spill into a fifth or sixth day, you can do some of that now without having that hard, firm stop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Parents, are you ready for a email campaign on the process of line process? Thank you for your question.
Okay. Next on the agenda is old business, policy, subcommittee.
Yeah, so we did a couple of policy first reads, a couple of policy first reads at our last meeting. You guys went through the red lines of those already, got the input and feedback from the committee, some minor changes on those, and what you have in front of you are just second reads, and as promised, these are clean reads, so no red line, no underline, no, you know, bold, just the clean version of the policy. I won't go through all of them in the interest of time, but what I do is, one by one, bring it up. If you've got any questions, you can field those questions, and then I ask for a vote on each from the committee. So the first is DB, that's annual budget process.
I don't have, I don't have any question. I just know that Mr. Hayes was the one that was most, I'm not sure which particular ones he was most interested in and had most comments, so.
The feedback that Mr. Hayes, and I looked back to the notes as we made the updates here, had expressed, was really about making sure that the word "situate" was focused, you know, was reflected in all of the language. So some of the language that we had in there was just that said, "the school committee" versus the "situate" public schools, you know, or "the situate school committee." So we made a conscious effort to go in there and make sure that it really said "situate" in all the areas that it should, without being redundant to say "situate" every single line, so we tried to be thoughtful and flexible on that. So I think you'll see that reflected in this document, that wasn't in your first red line. Otherwise, for DB, I had no notes that were substantive changes that the committee at large had recommended beyond what the subcommittee for policy had recommended.
Okay.
Are we voting?
We can, we can, I can take.
Is it a bunch, or like?
No, we have to do each one individually, so if you, somebody wants to do, we can do one after discussion of each one, if you want.
You guys want to make, so they only require two readings though, correct?
You can have more than two readings, but the requirement is at least two readings, so you wouldn't be able to do a first reading typically and then vote.
This one, I don't think so. This one's pretty straightforward, I think.
I think we need to change this at the beginning.
We can go, let's go through all of them, and then we can do the vote. All right.
Great. That's DB. Next is DBC, this is budget deadline. A refresher for you from the red line is that this identifies that the calendar year's budget presentation will be determined, calculating backwards from final adoption date. It's part of what we've already been doing, it just hasn't been reflected in our policy, frankly, and it should be. And so that was the major recommendation by MASC, and therefore, you see here in your language as well. Obviously, the selectmen have the authority to impose the date as early as December thirty-first, and that's reflected there, too. Again, reflecting Mr. Hayes's input about making sure the word "situate" is in our language, you'll see that there as well. So paragraph four, you know, the "situate school committee will observe statutory requirements for holding public hearing," which we do, it's that suitable Saturday, February, I don't know, first or second this year.
My only comment on these that we're doing the second reading is that the date is the seventh on these, on these, these five.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, thank you for that. It should be the twenty-first.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions on DBC?
Very good. Uh, DBD, budget planning. So budget planning is important because it identifies some of our top priorities and what the process should look like. Again, we talked a little bit about, you know, making sure that we engage in advanced planning with input from staff and community, and that our focus obviously is on students and their education, also that we establish levels of funding that'll provide high-quality education for all students, and finally, that we use the best techniques for budget development and management. Again, we tried to make sure that we reflect the word "situate" in there, so it's specific to, to "situate," but ultimately reflect the recommendations that MASC puts forward for all school districts in the Commonwealth.
This is nitpicky, but I don't really like how it says, "the system will attempt to balance."
Do you have a preference?
It feels like, I don't know.
The, the "situate public schools," do you prefer something like that?
You see, it's like, up the top, "the system will also attempt," it just feels corporate, you know, generic. Yeah.
So like a motion to amend? That's okay.
Motion to amend DBD language in the second sentence there?
Mm-hmm.
From "the system will attempt to," it's a better fit, "situate school system?" How are we wording it? Oh, "situate public schools will attempt to balance?"
Should it be that, or should it say "situate school committee"?
Yeah, you're right.
Change your amendment.
Okay, motion to change, move on that, to "however, the situate school committee will also attempt to balance the valid interest of taxpayers."
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I make a, just a question for clarity from this group? Would you let me hold DBD and bring it to a future committee meeting, or do you plan to vote with that amendment?
I don't see any problem of voting with the amendment.
As amended.
Agreed.
Amended.
All right. The last is DJ, this is budget transfer authority. These are minor changes, again, recommended by MASC, thank you, Chairperson Limblam will make that note on the October twenty-first, that's the date we've got here, obviously. The update here, again, just a reminder, was that we follow the DESI chart of accounts, that's a four-digit account number ending in double zero. Again, this is process that we already follow, but that policy hadn't reflected, so we want to make sure our policy reflects our process. In addition, the committee recommended that we have the business and finance director give a regular report to the school committee, which is something that was brought up in the subcommittee's conversations as well. You can see that reflected there, and you had your first at our last meeting.
Does anybody have any questions on DBJ?
Do we need to define what regular reports are? Quarterly reports, or whatever it is that we need? I don't know. I don't know what regular means.
We kept debating to have flexibility in there.
Yeah.
We not did it, but at the same time, that's a consideration.
I guess my question is, on all these policies, when would we ever, I know why we utilize policies, but when would we look at this policy? If something wasn't brought to our attention, we say, hey, we have a policy DBJ, and it wasn't done correctly, when do we, when would we reference this policy?
We reference our policies all the time and everything.
With the specific one, when would we do it? Or who would, who would refer to it?
So our business director, Mr. Donlin, refers to all these policies pretty regularly, make sure that we're adhering to them. It's the reason why, as part of the subcommittee, I bring in the expert for each sort of bucket of work. So right now, the subcommittee's been working on financial policies. These, there's a bunch more that we just sat down on this evening to talk a little bit more about, and so we bring Mr. Donlin in for those, and then for our policies about curriculum instruction, we bring in Ms. Arnold, and policies about human resources, we bring in Ms. Donahue. So each of these buckets of policies, in a lot of ways, drives the way we operate our school district, and the bright lines for where we operate our school district. And again, so, you know, one of the things I appreciate with policy conversations, they can be pretty dry, I get that it's not the most exciting part of our work, but it's really important work because we want to make sure our policies reflect, A, what we're doing, and B, the most up-to-date regulations, laws, and recommendations.
So do you need to define regular?
I don't think so. I think if we keep it open, I mean, he can do it monthly, he can, you know, whenever it's needed, when we ask.
Okay. And last here, we've got for second meeting is file DD, policy DD, it's for the proposals and applications. Again, just a brief refresher for you, this is to do if we end up going out and looking for sources of possible resource outside of our typical funding streams. Grants is probably the most common example of the way in which you'd apply policy DD. One of the- Okay. And last here, we've got for second reading is file DB, policy DB, it's from the proposals and applications. Again, just a brief refresher for you, this has to do if we end up going out and looking for sources of possible resource outside of our typical funding streams. Grants is probably the most common example of the way in which you'd apply policy DB. One of the things, again, just to refresh the committee's memory, is paragraph three, sentence two, "the superintendent shall provide prior notice to the situate school committee of intent to submit a proposal for any such specially funded project which binds the district to future financial obligations." Those are the key operative words there that we spent quite a bit of time thinking about for the language. That means that if in the future there is a grant opportunity, but also that that grant has strings attached in which the district must pay something in the future, this committee must be aware of that and make sure that you've weighed in on it accordingly, which is, I mean, right under sort of priority one of a school committee fiduciary oversight.
Are there any questions for the policy DB? Okay. Here's some motions.
You have to do one at a time?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve- Make a motion to approve, is it file DB, oh, here this, to approve policy file DB as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are all of them amended? Does it date?
And the fact that we amended the policy.
Correct, okay. Make a motion to approve policy file DBC as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve policy file DBD as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve policy file DBJ as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, make a motion to approve policy file DD as amended.
Second.
Can I have those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Five new policies.
Those get updated in the next maybe 48 hours or so, and we'll see those on our online policy handbook for everyone. I thank you for that.
Okay, now is the first opportunity for comments, statements, or questions from the public. There being none, we move on to new business, policy.
So the policy subcommittee, again, it's a really great group of folks working hard to make sure that our policies are in line with the recommendations from Massachusetts Association of School Committees, as well as DESI regulations and state law changes. You have two new policy proposals here in front of you, they're both amendments to existing policies. What I did was I just uploaded your redlined version as well, so you'll see in your packet the redlined version as well as a clean version. The redlined version get real messy with all the formatting there on that right-hand side, but you can see the way we do any update to like an MOU or a contract, again, bold and underlined if it's an addition, and then strike through for proposed changes that are removals of language. So policy DK is payment procedures, a couple of major adjustments here. MASC and DESI both make recommendations that for financial policy, you have the superintendent or designee as the language, so you see that versus individuals like the finance director or director of finance and business, et cetera. The director of finance and business obviously can be that designee, oh, yeah, sure. Sorry about that. The director of finance and business can certainly be that designee, of course, but it allows for any designee that's appropriate, certainly. The second is that we use the word warrants as list of bills, because that's what we use there. And it's a municipal treasurer, not a town treasurer. Again, superintendent or designee is the language that's recommended by MASC, and it's a budget allocation. So these are really small items that MASC makes a recommendation for on this particular policy.
Any questions on this policy?
You know, I just want to make sure that we are removing director of finance and business, which would be Paul's position, correct? So we're just changing the titling of that to fall it under you, have it fall under you?
Again, just for clarity, the general operative work would still take place under his office, but the recommendation for MASC is that you have a superintendent or designee in the event that you change this director's job title, you then have to go back in and change all of your policies accordingly. So it simply just puts it up a level, allows it to be that designee now into the future. If you feel strongly about keeping that language there, you certainly can, but that's the rationale for why it says superintendent or designee. Believe me, this is not me wanting to go like, do Paul's work, that's a whole nother ball of wax.
In the start of the second paragraph that we're going to keep, it says, "as an operating procedure, the committee will receive monthly lists of bills or warrants." Should that be to remove monthly and at the end of the sentence put as needed? Something along those lines, just because I think Cindy gives us a sack of warrants every meeting.
That's an excellent point, thank you. We can make that edit paragraph three, thank you for that. Any other questions on that one? Good edits there?
No, I think, no, I think it's not something policy-related, but I think it's helpful that we have the policy regarding regular updates to coincide with this payment procedures, because what we're approving here is that we're making sure we don't spend more than we have. So when we get those regular quarterly updates, we can check it, I guess, to some degree, to make sure that we're on track for spending.
Absolutely. And you should know that when you get a warrant that's already been checked three times, right, so by Cindy in her office, Mrs. Donlin, and myself, and we go through every single line, just doing one tonight, actually, every line, anything that's either a question mark that hasn't been on the radar, or something that I question in terms of the amount that it's asking for compared to the line item and the budget that I know is in that line item, that gets questioned and bounced back before it ever even gets to the committee. Good, any other questions?
Those were both like adding to it?
No, I was just saying that this works well with-
Oh, okay.
Our other policy that says regular update.
Right.
Good. We'll make that edit, and you'll see that in your packet for the next time. And I'll pull up this last one for you here. This next one is policy DKC. Again, you'll see the bucket of policies are all the financial policies. This is expense reimbursements. A little bit about some of the major updates there. This reflects things like travel, professional developments. One of the major changes that MASC had put forward that I thought was helpful for this committee as well is an addition for language that allows the school committee to identify and reimburse for travel requests for the school committee. And an example of when you'd apply that policy language would be something like, if we were to get approval for some new elementary school, and if we wanted to go out and visit other elementary schools, and committee members wanted to as well, you'd get reimbursement for travel that you could approve or disapprove for your committee members to go and see other schools that have different, you know, design features that you think could be relevant and important for a school here in Situate. Oh, I'll pull up, sorry. Hey, you see the-
Reimbursed by the town, the "situate" that come out of the school committee budget, these expenses here.
Everything in the language that you're working here comes out of the school budgets.
The cross off the red line, it says employees may also apply for reimbursement for certain tuition charges. What about the-
What does that mean?
The teachers, I know, are able to be reimbursed.
Yep, it's a super good question, actually, I thank you for bringing it up. Totally still are, that changes nothing at all, that's just contract language versus policy language. So in, we have six contracts, there's six human labor groups, and all of them are set up differently for the way in which expenses are reimbursed, and so you'd manage that language through a contract versus through policy. Thank you for noting that, that's not a signal like that's going away, or that's changing, like completely staying totally the same. All of those benefits remain entirely the same, it's just that they're different in every single laborer group's contract and CBA with the committee. Again, if you feel strongly, we can certainly keep them in there, but that's a recommendation through MASC that you do those through your contract, not through your policy. Questions, recommendations on this one? DKC.
So you have, you have a policy subcommittee, right, that's going to go through all these? Right?
Two members right here?
So these are, just so that everyone knows, that these have already gone through a series of revisions before they've come to us.
They started recommendations- Seal would like you to repeat that, I think.
Sorry.
It's okay. Yeah, so again, the recommendations for major changes come through a couple of different ways. MASC, DESI, legal recommendations and changes. We take those and put them in front of a policy subcommittee, made up of two of your members here, community members, leaders, union members, they take a look at it. Again, I appreciate this is not really riveting stuff, but it's important that our policies are up-to-date with the recommendations around the state. Once they make any tweaks or recommendations or changes, you get their version of that. The committee at large makes recommendations, changes, final review, and we do two readings that way. So it goes through a couple of different filters before it even gets to this point.
All right.
Thank you. We'll add those for second reading for our next meeting.
Next up is the subcommittee reports, and first is the situate charter update, which I will give. So I was asked to have one of the members of the committee appointed to the charter review committee that the town is putting together, and I think Mrs. Brandalini has talked about being on the charter review committee, so I'm appointing you. Okay. Good luck with that.
Nope.
And the next one.
I think you should vote an appointment to a committee.
I move to make Nicole Brandalini our representative on the charter review committee.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up is the financial forecast update.
Excellent. So very briefly on the financial forecast, we haven't done a whole lot of financial forecasting yet for FY '21, we're a little early. We did have a financial forecast meeting, so I wanted to give you a little update on that. So in terms of '21, you've got the backup there in your packet, you can see your financial forecasts for '21 are very early. We typically have one more financial forecast in December, that's much more close to the actuals in terms of the projections for '21. But what is important for you for '20 is, as I mentioned a few weeks ago, the legislature has put forward a update in the FY '20 budget that has an increase to chapter 70. Like two minutes on this, I promise, I know we've got a Patriots game tonight, I can see people excited for that. But just a little summary that I think is important. So the municipalities and school districts typically do their budgets, and are passing their budgets before the state passes its budget. So what ends up happening is every year, when the state passes its budget, there's a cherry sheet update that comes through that municipalities get after their budgets are already approved. The cherry sheet is like state aid that comes through to municipalities in a bunch of different buckets. One of those buckets is chapter 70, which is the legal, the law and the formula that describes how school districts and communities ultimately get funding from the state. It's a little more complicated than that, but that's the 10,000-foot view of it. Anyway, municipalities like Situate, we typically budget pretty conservatively, which is very good, so that we're never underwater when the state comes back and gives their final budget. But it means that typically, any funds that come in after the state approves its state budget go directly to free cash, and are reapportioned accordingly, you know, based on special town meeting. This year is different. The majority of the cherry sheet changes were through chapter 70. Again, that's the law that governs the formula, that governs how the state gives out money for school education. So because the majority of the additional revenue to Situate, about $340,000 or so, is in chapter 70, we've worked with the financial forecast to apply our two-thirds, one-third formula to these funds as well, so that those funds don't just go to free cash, two-thirds would go to the school department, $240,000 or so thousand dollars, and the remaining would go to the town. And so you've got that cherry sheet backup in, you know, in your packet as well. And the school district, obviously, we're very excited about this. We struggled with some out-of-district services that were higher than we anticipated, certainly for this year, at about a quarter of a million dollars, and this would make us whole in that regard. So it's $242,943,000, excuse me, that would come in as part of an additional chapter 70 bump on the cherry sheet, and if that's approved at special town meeting, those funds would go to special education, out-of-district services in our school district. And again, you've got that cherry sheet, you can see the FY '20 update from the legislature in your packet, as well as the early, early, early FY '21 projections from the financial forecast. Take any questions?
Yeah, Ron, do you anticipate that we will better, or other municipalities will be able to better forecast state aid going forward based upon this? Or do we think that we're going to continue this every, or for the next couple of years anyways?
It's a really good question, so I feel like there's maybe two answers to talk about there. The first is that I think we can do, we can do more conservative budgeting for our special education services going into next year, so I want to name that. That's certainly on us to think about that. And then in terms of chapter 70, it really is going to depend on what the legislature does with that education bill. Right, so this is my opinion, this last part's my opinion. I believe that because the bill wasn't passed, the legislature made a good faith effort and signaled the school districts by offering this bump in chapter 70 for '20, for FY '20, right? I have no, there's no data behind that, that's just me sort of keeping a tight eye on Beacon Hill and the things that they've been doing. That said, if the bill is ultimately passed, then you'll just see an increase that we can better prepare for going forward, right? So if the bill goes forward, they'll have a five- and six-year projection, we'll be able to build that right into our annual budget projections going forward as well. So the intention would be that the bill is passed, and we know exactly how much is coming in, and can budget accordingly.
It would still come in under the cherry sheet estimate, correct? So it would still, the end agreement with the town would continue?
That's correct. And if you look at the cherry sheet now, in our typical financial forecasting dollars now, we already take a look at the entire cherry sheet anyway, and that's part of our funding that we allocate, we decide beforehand, before any of the common backouts are taken into account, and then it's divided two-thirds, one-third. Right, so before like insurance gets backed out and those sorts of things that both the town and the school department have to contribute to equally.
So this just might be cleaning up the sheet, but next to the split for the school, it has assumption four, which says that the cost of the bus leaves will be put under this, under the school department, and then it's listed above with assumption 13, saying it was added to the shared costs. And it looks like the streetlights are also added to the shared cost.
They are both.
So those are both, so the buses are out of our part of the budget, it's just above the line and not counted twice somewhere?
The buses are not counted twice, they are above the line, so they've become a shared cost.
Okay, so make sure it's clean.
And so when you saw, like, I guess here as a part of our budget, you know, three years ago, we had something like $200,000 of busing costs that we had to allocate each year, those would still be shared costs. Now, again, just to be full disclosure for you and for everybody, because the district has the highest number of employees and therefore has a large budget, two-thirds of that cost is still borne by us technically, right? Because two-thirds of the revenue ends up coming to the school district anyway. So it is a shared cost, but it's not a gone cost. Does that make sense? Like, we're still owning that. Clean on the sheet, yes. And you're going to, you'll see, we'll start the budget cycle in about four weeks. End of November typically, we go through the budget calendar, and in December, we start really hitting the budget cycle in earnest, and we'll have a, hopefully, just a better, closer projection for FY '21 as well.
Is Mike Hayes the financial coordinator?
Yes. Myself, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Donlin sit on the financial forecast committee to represent the school department. Myself, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Darwin sit on the Financial Forecast Committee to represent the school department.
Are there any other questions from them?
Sorry. I'm going to drag it in. So that's that cherry sheet I was talking about, this is the state aid, right?
All set?
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the second opportunity for comments, statements, or questions from the public. Just state your name and your address.
Shayne O'Fallow, 39th Central Drive.
Shayne.
Sorry, I'm new, this is, you'll take a comment on any topic at this point, not just your proceeding.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So I'm a parent of having the first graders or classes that are quite large, I understand you addressed in your last reading. First was just a comment to say a word of thanks for the swift action. We're thrilled to see the paralegal posted in class, that's more support for teachers that's coming. And then two follow-up questions are, one, we'd love to know the best ways to advocate for a third class group for that group of first graders. It's quite large. And then maybe a broader question about advocating, I think this was the topic last time as well, for class size cap. So we don't get to that '23, '24.
Go ahead.
So in terms of advocacy, I think the best place to start is with your school, right? At your school council, and those are the platforms for that sort of a thing, that's really helpful. And then typically, any proposals for a new program, or a class, or an aid, or any of those things would come up through the schools and a recommendation would come forward. We do that throughout the school year when all sorts of needs pop up. Sometimes a student, you know, has needs that didn't present in August or didn't present in September, but they do present in October and those sorts of things. So that's the pathway. And then in terms of advocacy, just going forward for, you know, splitting that group in general into three sections versus two, just given the feedback that we've had about that, that's something we've already taken to the calculus for FY '21. I can't make a promise to you at this very moment, but I would say, continue to be engaged with your school. Certainly reach out to myself or to anyone here, you know, for other input about that. But in December, we typically do a draft of what the budget looks like. December or January, the budget looks like. And as part of the budget, we even go through all the sections. So at that budget draft stage, we're talking about like, oh, this building's got nineteen sections. It's up one section from last year for these reasons, or, oh, this building's down a section because one went down, and so on. So you actually get to see that as the budget process begins. And I'd say in terms of information, you should take a look on the website now. You can take a look at last year's budget. It even has the structure of what that looks like now, so you can see the have lay and the number of sections that were proposed for the have lay. It would look something similar for next year, so you can see which sections are being added, which sections are being removed as needed. And February, I can get the date for you, it's like the first Saturday in February. We do a public session for budget as well. We walk through that thing in minute detail, and the community can share input as well.
Generally, I'm a statement or a comment, I guess. So, okay, then, I know we've talked about this in past, possibly getting a little more information about what is being presented. I knew what Rob was presenting in terms of high school exam. Paul knew what was being presented, so if we could just get more information in high school exam, maybe your final, you know, reduction in, to, or something like that. More information so that more people know what is actually being discussed versus just like.
I can say from, when I saw the agenda, I knew exactly what Rob was going to be presenting because of all the comments, of course, on social media. I honestly was surprised that only a couple of people here, because there was a lot of discussion in the community about it.
I was wondering if that discussion was not here in high school exam, it was.
Right, true.
How many of you are in Situate?
I mean, the agenda is sent out electronically to everybody who signs up for it. Anybody who has questions about what is a particular agenda item, I'd be happy to answer them if they wanted to reach out to me or Mr. Griffin. Nobody had, I don't know. I mean, I honestly think it's self, it's pretty self-explanatory. I could have.
Well, I'm just, I'm just giving you an example, but in general, if there's just one, you know, high school exam in the city of high school, a lot of people won't know it, and it's a lot of people that aren't, I mean, I know at individual meetings, I have conversations with Rob, I know exactly what this is about. I received a lot of texts tonight about, what's high school exam? I mean, we're all busy people, and sometimes you don't get a chance to look at the agenda until the day of. So just that little, even just a word on what is, what's being discussed that might, if you get more questions, maybe.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, we try to be pretty clear. Again, if there's something that people have questions about, they can absolutely reach out to me, myself, whoever's the chair, or the Mr. Griffin, I don't know, yeah. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Next on the agenda is warrant signatures, which, yep, none. Correspondence. We all received this lovely, lovely postcards from the students who went on the Acadia trip last weekend, which it was so nice, and they had a great time. And I just wanted to say thank you to those students who reached out to us because I thought that was very thoughtful, and I'm glad to, glad to hear that they had a great time. And the South Shore Educational Collaborative.
You have your update from them. As you know, I represent the district on the South Shore Educational Collaborative Board. Two minor updates there, budget projections and enrollment projections, as well as their OPEB trust balance was reviewed.
Other business? Do you have any other?
I think we talked about it at one meeting a while back about going over the website again and the app and stuff. There's been like questions about using it and user friendliness.
Yeah. I think we decided about emailing any questions to Ron, any issues or questions about it. Which I, yeah, for the website, yeah, I haven't actually had a chance to.
Something you want to change or add, send it our way. The developer's been really responsive and open to those kinds of ideas.
Lorded on to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Future agenda items. Did you want to take those? The Celebrate Student Meeting, the Emergency Shelter Memorandum of Understanding. So maybe you could elaborate on what that would be. Is that what we?
Yeah, so we're in the process of finalizing MOU with the Situate Fire Department. We've been working on that for several months now. That would expand the language in which we use to set an emergency shelter and would codify it. We don't currently have an emergency that, and we should. And so, again, trying to make sure that we have legal language in place for these sorts of things. It's several pages they're working on their end as well. We finalized our side with the legal team, and you'll get a look at that as soon as we get an okay.
So that has to do with like displaced residents? They come here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and how that works and reimbursements and those sorts of things.
Right. The Transportation and Start Time Overview of the Budget Development and the Costa Rica Out of Country. Facilities and OCR Update.
Great. Yes.
And that's it. We're going to head into executive session, but I would have, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
One second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we will enter executive session via roll call.